...in the evening, Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. To order at seven oh three, the number one.
Mr. Puljak.
Here.
Mrs. McPhillips.
Here.
Mrs. Errol Farmfield. Mrs. Theodore.
Yeah.
Mr. Verravi.
Here.
Mr. Tribuzio.
Here, we have a board. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to our citizens. Proud, small, deeper, for the American.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, visitors here tonight. Do we have any correspondence? Oh, I'm sorry, mission statement. The mission of North School District Eighty is inspiring educational excellence in the near training environment. Now to the oath of office for new board member, Maria Law. If you read the oath.
I am Maria Law, to solemnly swear that I faithfully discharge the duties of office and management of the board of education of North School District Eighty in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect and have this fair interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall urge to respect the free expression of opinion by my health board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual that that decisions can be made only by the majority vote at a public board meeting. And I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board or obtain the right to see changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall protect the responsibility to my role in ethical and positive education of our students, student, and school districts. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, go on like votes and finding outcomes and reset force for North School District Eighty. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I was, I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of students' achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children and applying to the state law. I shall serve as an education key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for school District Eighty. And I shall strive to work together with district superintendents to do the school district toward toward fulfilling the vision of the board has created, fostered excellence for our students and caregivers by having skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal talent.
Thank you very much. I'll take back. The end of the group name.
Your name played right there. There you go. Congratulations, you're welcome.
Celebrate the success, Giles School Gibert Award.
Yes, thank you. Each year we celebrate the Gibert Award. And the Gibert Award is a former educator administrator here in North School District Eighty. Ralph Gibert was a physical education teacher, a principal, and ended his career in District Eighty as a superintendent of schools. So many, there's many qualities that Mr. Gibert held in self, in his self-esteem. And he was always looking for students that possessed a positive attitude, integrity, compassion, leadership, honor, responsibility, cooperation, and service. And I'm pleased to announce that this year we had fourteen students that were nominated for this award. And the winner of the two thousand and twenty-five, as announced at graduation by our board president, Mr. Tribuzio, was Sylvia McPhillips. Congratulations Sylvia. Now, this is a confidential award, so the board president, until he enters the stage, does not even know who the winner is. What was your reaction, your thoughts, when you heard your name mentioned?
Well, obviously, the whole graduation was really exciting, so I was, I was already thinking about that. Um, I was shocked. I was, I was completely surprised, but then I was like looking at my friends, I was really excited, so it was surprising.
Yeah, so thank you for everything that you have done in your career here in North School District Eighty. And we wish you the very best as you now go on to high school. So take these same qualities and same traits and continue them at Ridgewood High School. So congratulations. Before I end, I just, the parents, this is a bigger word. What did the parents think? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, we were shocked, for sure, definitely. There were a lot of kids coming.
Yeah, she was happy to be nominated. We were like, that's a huge honor in itself, so if my mouth dropped, I don't know. Thank you.
Well, thank you both and Sylvia. Should we do a group picture? So if we can have the board members go underneath the basket, the hoop over there for a picture with Sylvia. Thank you.
Of course, McPhillips family, you're welcome to stay for the full meeting. Thank you for coming, so I love you.
On action items, consider motion to approve the agenda as modified with the modification being the rule of two thousand and eighty-five.
At the time of the agenda being posted, we thought we were filling this position, however, we are not. So we're just removing the position that we were going to put in.
Can I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Jim, Amanda, all of you say aye.
Aye.
All will say aye. Motion passes. Uh, now, I'd like to recognize our visitors. Thanks for coming here tonight. Uh, correspondence, is there any?
No, there is none.
Due to public participation. For your request, uh, all files can be found at our website as published. Presentations, starting with District Eighty, new website.
Okay, um, well, you guys already are well aware about our, our website. Our website is divided into three main segments. Uh, the district, the Giles community segments, and then it's got a whole bunch of tiles and things on the side and things at the top and well, things kind of everywhere, and that doesn't help you find anything. Um, we got the old site set up for a company called Final Site about five years ago. It was coming up on renewal time, and the company said, yeah, we'll renew you for another five years, it's only forty thousand dollars, and you get to pick a new template. Well, the template we had, it was fine, to a degree, but it did kind of lock us into some things that we weren't exactly happy about. And so I said, why don't we just try doing something on our own real quick? So I whipped up a little temporary website, and uh, I, I kind of got some positive feedback on that, and so I continued. And I basically moved every, all the importance of all the information over from the old site to this site. It's currently W W two, W W two dot norridgeav.net. Uh, right now, if you, by default, most browsers will go with a HTTPS. The S doesn't work just yet because that's the security, you have to have a certificate for that. And until this is something I'm really doing, I'm not going to pay for a certificate. Uh, but just to see the site, if you want to go to the HTTPS, colon slash slash, W W two dot norridgeav.net, that gets you to this site. The flag is functional. Uh, and what I did is, instead of having three sections to the site, um, I just have a menu for each one of the sites. And if everything, there we go, thank you. Um, and go ahead and click on maybe Board of Education. And it's very similar to what we had before, but we don't have the things on the sides and the things at the bottom and the things everywhere. A little easier, a little cleaner, just cleaned it all up and just made it easier to navigate around. But the nice thing about this site, technically, it is plenty upon us, so we already had the assist log functions and some other duties, but not enough that it was actually like really causing it to be bottom down, as we had. Um, this essentially costs us almost nothing. There is a security certificate that has to be purchased, less than fifty dollars a year, probably all. So over the course of five years, two hundred and fifty dollars may not even, uh, compared with forty thousand dollars you need through Final Site. Um, there are some, some differences, for sure. Um, for example, Final Site does give us a tool that kind of helps us edit the webpages. So what I did is, I built a template, uh, and I broke things down into bite-sized pieces and wrote some instructions for the others on our staff that we edit pages. I think it didn't work. But the nice thing about this is, if we give it a try and we decide we don't like it, we can always call Final Site or another company and say, hey, we'll write you a check and we'll do our site review. And it's, it's worth a try. Um, trying to think of the, oh, we did subscribe to a newsletter software we were talking about. Our secretaries, they do a weekly track newsletter. And they were using the Final Site tool to do that. And it was okay. Uh, but there's another tool that a lot of school pre use called Smore. And we went ahead and subscribed to Smore to help our secretaries, uh, work together with our principals and superintendent to create our weekly newsletter. And I think the newsletter is going to turn out a little nicer than ever, and it's going to be easier for parents to translate. It has a lot of translation capabilities built into it. Um, and that is, uh, that tool that we have just subscribed to, I think it's about a thousand two hundred fifty per year. So if you take that thousand two hundred fifty here and you take the cost of certificate, you're still talking around six thousand dollars over a five-year period compared with the forty thousand in Final Site. Again, we're not locked into this at all. Um, but I, you know, it's worth a try. The nice thing about this, when you're doing it on your own, I created this template, um, is that we can also, if, if we just decide, well, we don't like this, that, or the other, we're not locked into this template, or we can modify it some way. Where with Final Site, kind of once you choose a template, you're locked into that, that period, that doctrine. That's part of it.
Kind of moving around a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
This isn't, isn't final yet, um, but John has done a really great deal of work on us. John, I want to thank you for all of your work on us. Um, and John is underplaying how much work he did on us. He literally had to take every page and move it over onto the new system. And I think that the nice part is he is metric, is we can change something. You know, what we had done once before was, you know, we wanted, we called up John, so put the phone number of the district for the schools up on top on the left, and then I put that kind of awkward box on top. And we couldn't control that. So now we can actually control the layout of where we want the things. And, and you have the consistency, uh, so that's one of the things you want to do when you study websites, is you want to keep each page kind of consistent. So you can see each of these open up. Uh, it doesn't go to another page, it kind of opens up as like a, you know, either where I would use that, that's the right word. Where you, you're not going off to a new page, but you're still on that page and you can see that new information. So we have a couple of things to tweak them. Um, but I think it's really great. I'm very grateful for John for taking the time to put this together. We did have some feedback from the, from the superintendent advisory committee. Um, uh, when they looked at it last, well, they looked at the basic template six months ago, maybe? Somewhere around there. And then again, last week, they did some diving into it. And really, it was kind of an interesting conversation how it evolved. At first, they were like, oh, we kind of missed the little, the little buttons. But then as we kept going through each page, they're like, you know what? Don't go back to the little buttons, leave it as, as it is, and this is very useful and very helpful for parents. And as John said, the weekly tracks, which right now is just a copy, this isn't live, of the May thirtieth. But when we move to Smore, it will allow us to have, anyway, the word that I always use is like a little more capability in making it look cleaner. And with Final Site, we were very kind of stuck into what the fonts were, or what the color could be, or the size could be. And Smore will allow us to be able to make that look a little nicer and, um, uh, just put together some cleaner. Elwood Park, if you, uh, the board wants to look at Elwood Park's website, they use Smore. I'm not sure, actually, right now, as I say that, if they have Smore, uh, here's what are up on their website this summer. But, and it's very convenient, just about, uh, John mentioned, uh, translating. So our families can translate in many different languages. Be able to speak in Russian, which really has been our, uh, our big thing this year is to be able to provide. Right now, whenever I send out an email, I send it in Spanish, Ukrainian, whatever. If so, people identify with that by digital, they'll watch them with that. Something that we've been building up in our programs. So John, I want to thank you. Does the board have any questions for John?
I'm still laughing.
We're thinking like, first we're gonna laugh.
The contract on Final Site runs out at the end of this month, so ideally, when I, we come back home weekend, uh, there, and in the first part of July, it'll be migrated over. It might take a day or two, uh, to get everything, uh, functional across every system. The NSNAPA, it's a proper name, it's on different networks, it's spoken sometimes. Um, yeah, first of all.
So we might be down completely for a day or two.
What was the test site again, or the George two, did you say?
Oh, uh, W W N W two, the number two, dot norridgeav.net. So it's just like the regular website, but with a two after the W.
And John, did you take new pictures or did you clean?
I, I did take new pictures. Um, if, if we use the ultra wide lens on the phone and then take the middle third, it fits that spacing really nicely.
It, it looked good.
Well, it looked better than walking out.
Yeah, we're beginning to think. And now with all of this asphalt work is going to be worked on this summer, so we'll, John, I'll take any pictures.
Yeah, we'll get another bit.
Once, once we have that all done.
Well, thank you.
And we also are talking about painting those letters of, of leaves, so that will even stand out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have some questions? Uh, can you, can you, can you do anything?
Mm-hmm, the superintendent advisory committee?
Yeah. What do you mean, you're like going out there to the course of life? Just like, what was the, what was the, to do as well to test to? We'll get a study, because that's what we should do. It makes like a stock of a little bit of life.
Sure. Okay, yep, I did leave that last one.
Got it.
And I'm the superintendent advisory committee. And they did, we actually spent probably, you met for about hour and a half, it was probably about thirty minutes, but.
I would just say, I'm sorry, John, I'm a little, like, the gray versus white contrast is a little.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
I think we need to change that, that's one of the feedbacks I think it was. John is actually, uh, John and I are both heading out to vacation, uh, next week, John starts off tomorrow. So I said, once he gets back, let's put those, but I still wanted the board to see that tonight. And then in July, I will show you the live version. Like, it is very difficult, especially on that screen, which is.
Well, even looking at, I, that's why I was seeing it on the screen, I'm like, oh, maybe she's a screen operator.
Yeah, and it's interesting that, that maybe that I mean with the individuals, they were like, oh, we like the buttons. Then they were like, no, we don't like buttons. And we looked at a bunch of different websites, we have one where we want something. And then we will put something out here. Right now, there's just, this was my May thirtieth, um, what I wrote in the tracks, that's not going to continue. So like, right here will be a little introduction to the district. A little bit like if I click on About Us, but it won't click the same, but it'll be the mission statement, the vision, and then a little bit about our, our two schools, what, you know, what the schools are, what kind of programs we have. So general, which will be the first page here. And then we will probably keep our calendar about us on the news, although we'll change the fonts on those, so that and then go with, uh, more contracts. We went with the blue color because that's kind of our district color. Anything else, anyone else? John really did a lot of work on that, and, um, no, we got to the point where we were like, do we really want to pay forty thousand dollars for this website? And you have somebody so talented that pretty. I do like the translation, please. I think that's crucial.
Uh, school improvement plan for Giles.
So tonight, we are, um, joined by some members of the Giles building leadership team. And of course, Mr. Beatty will lead us in their improvement plan. So they looked at their spring to spring data. Uh, this was really the first time that we could present this because we didn't have the spring data until now. And then they also, um, so the actual plan itself, I don't know, this should be a sixty pages?
Uh, fifty-two if it's been one or four.
And it does go through all of the different data over a multi-year, um, look. So that is also, it isn't right now on that website, but it'll be available on their website and then to look this presentation.
Well, thank you very much. We are always pleased every year to come present this information to you. Um, this is a working document. We get throughout the year fourteen meetings that the building leadership team met to analyze, evaluate, and discuss how are we going to make improvements going forward. So the team is made up of me, the principal, this is Gulo, the assistant principal. This is Fig, who is our sixth grade special education teacher. Uh, Mr. Verforca, who is our seventh grade science teacher. Uh, here today, we have Anna Lari, Bea Trask, who is our eighth grade social studies teacher. We also have Todd Rutter, our sixth grade ELA teacher. Sarah DiVino, who's our eighth grade special education teacher. Uh, Daniel Linderson, who is our seventh and eighth grade Spanish teacher. And Anthony Colletta, who is our fifth grade social studies teacher. Due to vacations and other family commitments they were going on, unfortunately, the other members were not able to attend. But we are happy that, um, Mr. Rutter and Mrs. Bea Trask were able to attend, so thank you. And I'll turn it on, but we're to Mr. Rutter.
Okay, who are we? Uh, Giles, we've had really consistent student enrollment. This year, we've got four hundred and ninety-three kiddos, which includes a hundred and thirty-seven graduates, a hundred and twenty-seventh graders, a hundred and twenty-four sixth graders, and a hundred and twelve littles, as we call them, Fig. Um, your dedicated staff, thirty teachers, four parents, Nurse Nellie, uh, five support staff, and the best re building at this rate. So this is.
I didn't have names, did I?
Uh, where should this be, this left pair? Oh, all right, so go, go ahead, John.
Sure. Um, I'll speak to the twenty twenty-four school data, so we have twenty-four percent, um, ML students. There are two different types of programs that occur in Giles School. There's a transitional bilingual education program, or a TVE, which is twenty more students in a, who speak primarily a specific language, such as Ukrainian and Polish, based on what our data has. For next year, we're able to add a Spanish teacher to the TVE program, um, which is different from our world, world languages program. We also have a TPI program that supports students of other languages, such as Russian or Arabic within our school. Um, so eight, eight percent of our students have IDPs. Those could be co-taught and their least restrictive environments have been the areas of ELA and math. Um, we have our combinations programs, which are taught by our special education teachers. Um, and then on the self-contained classroom. And fifty-two percent of our students are Korean students.
Okay, so as anyone knows, Giles, you know, the pride program, and especially being Giles made are part of our daily focus. Um, we really focus on, um, building expectations. We have classrooms and building matrices posted. We review our expectations, we model, and we really use positive reinforcement, um, through the PBIS program to reinforce the expectations, the positive behaviors that we're looking for. We're trying to reward kids for doing the right things and really showing them articulating what it means to be Giles made by being positive, respectful, inclusive, determined, and engaged each day.
So we have some amazing strengths here at Giles School. Um, we have our after-school support program that, which occurred for the last few years, um, due to COVID funding. So we're able to provide, um, during, like, two times a week, days and Thursdays, they receive, students who attended this program after school, um, received some social emotional support, some ELA, math, ML student support in tier one, tier three, and tier three interventions. Certified staff provided home-based instruction, um, for students who needed it. This was not a whole one club by any structural imagination. Um, it provided students for support, students who were struggling with their power standards, um, who were identified as needing tier two interventions in ML and SED support, so social emotional support too. Um, what was really cool about this year is that our students were able to, to participate in this base program, which is a student principal advisory for the unemployment. So all students at, from grades five through eight, to apply for a position on this, this, um, advisory committee. And what was great, they could talk about things that were issues for them. Um, so they brought that up to our administrative staff. And what was better was when we had our, um, they came up with their awesome recess plan, and both, uh, Mr. Rutter and myself were at recess, and these plans worked great. We had a variety of soccer, varied for football, volleyball. And all the students were able to be a little bit more safe than not, who we learn is everybody else's games. It could be really risky at things if you have seen them play football, um, and soccer. Okay, so there's multilevel program, as we, uh, had said before. Um, the multilevel staff was able to push in to our classrooms. Um, we had push-in for core subjects, so math, reading, science, social studies. And these teachers gave us invaluable support to help, uh, students who spoke different languages, um, for the TVE program. So both Ukrainian and our Polish teachers provided that support. Um, there were nineteen students that test out of, of our program, so that was amazing. So that, it was nice to see that near enough accident. Um, TPI students received support during VIN, um, which was great. Now, VIN is going away, where you see more as in this advisory period, so they'll be able to receive that support that they once received within the past term by certified EFL staff. So that's amazing too, and we're also excited to have another, uh, Spanish teacher listed for, um, which is going to be great for to provide more help for those students as well. And, uh, there are extra cool activities. So we have a very strong athletic program. We had some championships won here this school year. Um, our school spirit and culture too is strong, boys, PIS. Um, I, yeah, we have two bands, did amazing, we do pride, we have plenty of activities. So we are like, we have a lot of dreams going on here to finish.
One of the things that we were able to add this, this school year was a marching band. And the marching band program, so when we have championships, all the students get in the hallway, we clap, we celebrate, our band now, our marching band led us through the hallways, and it was really exciting. The also great opportunity with our, our awesome band program is we're able to send our marching band to Lee School for the Halloween parade, which is always huge every year here at Lee School. So that's really exciting, so acknowledge and celebrate as well. Our math, our math growth for this year, the purple is, is because of IREDDI. Uh, the way our, what we were doing, our plan was originally the phase in IREDDI and phase. The way our, what we were doing, our plan was originally the phase in I-R-E-D and phase out math. So this year, our current fifth graders had I-R-E-D, our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders had math. I met with the administration, the principal over at Bridgewater High School, because one of the things that we need to make sure is, is we've used math for so many years, is that we're able to take that data and, and give it to the high school, and they're able to use it for their student, incoming freshmen's student schedules. And as long as it's nationally known, it doesn't matter what program we use. So what we're doing, the big decision that we're making for next school year is we are removing math. We are not using math. We are moving away from that math, and we are strictly going with I-R-E-D. The nice thing about that is math at the lead school can be used for certain grade levels, I believe, below the third grade level. So it's at the third grade and higher. But I-R-E-D benchmarking data can be used at the lower grade levels. That's one of the areas. We want consistency for our students across from lead to Giles School. So looking at our fifth grade math I-R-E-D data, we were at that thirty-three percent. The sixth grade math was at sixty-seven percent. Our seventh grade math was at the fifty-seven percent. And our, our eighth graders were at that seventy-two percent for an overall fifty-seven percent. So based on this data, we're looking at it, we, we still think have a lot of growth that we need to do at Giles School. We made some consistent changes that we're gonna talk about as we go through this presentation. But one of the things, so for example, Mr. Rutter is a, is a, is a sixth grade E.L.A. teacher this year. Next year, Mr. Rutter is now a fifth and sixth grade P.L.A. teacher, whereas Mrs. Pieter Trowski is an eighth grade social studies teacher. Next year, Mrs. Pieter Trowski is going to be a seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher. And what that does, it helps with our professional learning communities, which we're gonna talk about in our later slides. For our reading growth, so at the fifth grade, we had fifty-six percent. At the, for I-R-E-D, for our fifth graders, sixth grade, we started with the math. We were at the sixty-third percentile as well as the seventh grade. Our eighth graders did a seventy-six percentile, and overall, they ended at the sixty-fifth percentile. Same concept, our math teachers will be five, six, seven, eight math teachers. That whole P.L.C. community is looking at our data, data drives instruction. And that's our goal next year, is that our teachers, which will have dedicated time in the school schedule, where they'll be able to, so Mr. Rutter, apparently, will be able to do with his hands in, and be able to have intentional meetings, reviewing data, reviewing common formative assessments, and seeing, you know, is it a tier-one issue? Is it something that needs to be retimed? Or is it something where we need to focus more with our tier-two students to provide that additional support within that classroom setting? We talked about that we're removing WIN. And what we're doing is that tier-two is gonna take place within that classroom setting by the expert. Our E.L.A. teachers and our math teachers are the expert. And so instead of having that being taken out and having a paraprofessional work with our students, it's now be done by a certified staff member. So we're excited for those opportunities that we've identified and are still looking for. So that we can, you know, move the needle forward and, and raise it to, to do better. And that's what we wanted to, we always want to strive for, to be better. Goals for next year. For math and E.L.A., we want seventy percent of our students across the board, fifth through eighth, to achieve, I'm sorry, we want seventy percent of the students to achieve their individual growth goal for I-R-E-D, math, and I-R-E-D reading across all grades from fall to spring. Our third goal, social emotional behavior, we want office referrals to reduce by ten percent from previous year.
So, speaking to the goals, our first goal for math achievement. We will, in order to achieve that, we will engage the building leadership team to facilitate professional learning communities, which will focus on the work, P.L.C., questions, reflective dialogue, and ever creation. That's where the, this, the P.L.C. process comes in. Where we'll be, we're providing time to meet with our co-teachers, our, like, I would be meeting with Mrs. Woodhouse, to have those collaborative conversations. Math teachers will also be regularly throughout the, the school year for the P.L.C., S.E.P.L.C. Also meeting as an academic list, problem solve, using our bridge minds, data warehouse, to look at the data, see how the students are progressing. If they need further assistance in their, their studies, then we will look at, we'll look at, putting them in a plan for progress monitoring six weeks on, and then we'll see how, how the students are progressing and have those detailed conversations during our P.L.C. The advancement committee will review data, and follow the I-R-E-D assessments to determine if the student is eligible for advancement to it.
Yeah, so for that program, so what it looks like, so I'll start at the fifth grade level. So a fifth grade student that is testing really high at that level, we meet as the administration and the math team, we come together, we review the data, we develop a plan, and we see how the student is within that classroom environment, that that student is eligible for that advanced program. And if that student does qualify for that advanced program, the, the, the math teacher will reach out to the parents and have that discussion. Because we wanna, we wanna make sure we open that communication, they're a team member, they're tied with education. We wanna make sure that we focus on that and, and, and support that student. But what we do then, if, if all parties agree that we do want to move forward with that advanced program, then we open it up for our, our, that student then from February until end of the year in May, then while they're in fifth grade, is completing the sixth grade curriculum. And then at the end of May, once they successfully completed that next grade level curriculum, then what happens is they start to follow me fall at the seventh grade level. So, and we do that, same, same concept, if the sixth graders move forward, when we get to where, because we're only to eighth grade, then we, we have a partnership with Bridgewater High School, although we are aware, and we work with, with Bridgewater High School. But then we have students that take classes, they're duly enrolled, not only here at Giles School, but they're also enrolled at Bridgewater High School. So they get a iPad, because Bridgewater High School uses iPads. They have a profile here for North School this year. They were so close to Ridgewood, they walk over to Ridgewood as a group, they take their course, their class, and then they come back. Schedules are a little different. So what we do at, at here at Giles is we, we create what's called an independent study to make that difference up when they're not ready for that next class, because the period hasn't started yet. So then they have what's called an independent study, where they can complete their high school schoolwork and finish up Giles schoolwork that they may not have. And then they resume their normal schedule. So we're excited for that partnership that we have. We've had, over the years, we've had, gosh, I think, three or four students that did a double level, which is really exciting. And it's, we've had eighth grade students or a seventh grade student taking sophomore level or a junior level math at the high school. So we love that we can provide those opportunities to our students.
So also, as part of our I.P., you know, reviews, some students may qualify for foundations program. Just this understanding of the growth in mathematics based on the performance of assessments and classroom achievements. So with special education, this foundation program is to help our special education teachers, and they work to identify what standards they need to continue to work on. At the end of the intervention cycle, grade levels meet two times a year to discuss the data. So we have A.D., which are math and reading teachers, which we meet with and discuss students, about individual students. And then what we are really excited for and very, very thankful for is the hiring of an interventionist for this coming school year. And it's our hope that, that an intervention is both right for outside of the classroom for tier-three instruction, but also inside of the classroom to provide hands-on activities for tier-two support, providing and also coaching teachers on their best research-based practices that they can use in order to help students achieve at higher levels as well.
E.L.A. specific steps. Like with math, moving toward that P.L.C. community, where I have a chance to collaborate with a colleague. What successes can we build on, or hey, what ideas do you have if I'm struggling? Provide targeted instructions to skills using primary standards. We've talked a lot about what standards. There are many, many really standards. Which ones are the must, which ones are the ones that we want to bring to the front and really highlight? Support M.L. students, taking advantage of our really talented M.L. staff to provide that support they need in their native languages. Provide, supports all M.L. parents through the bilingual parent advisory committee. That's through the parent university program. And then teachers will receive professional development in the implementation of best practices, whether it's Wednesday early releases, whether it's SIP days, teacher institute. We're just continuing to try to find best practices and ways to get better and serve the kids. Interventionists, we are really thankful to have interventions to work with next year. And again, using data days at the end of each intervention cycle to talk about what's going well, or what we need, or when we need to go back and sort of look at our plan and see where it can be revised and improved to serve the kids. So our third goal is our S.E.V. goal, social emotional behavior. One thing we are very pleased is we did hit our targeted goal for this, for this current school year. And our goal is to continue that for the, for the future as well. I know with Mrs. Gulo being new to the school district this year, she did an amazing job with, with our students. Our teachers also did an amazing job. One of the things that we do is we provide our teachers with professional development on behavior regulation, de-escalation, and behavior management. Students will self-assess and put their actions towards through their current thoughts and feelings. So I'm a C.P.I. certified trainer, so I go and support our staff, train them with de-escalation techniques when a student is in a crisis, so that we can help them and support them. Teachers also have self-regulation, tier, uh, tier-one, tier-two, and three in the classrooms, where students can do that within that classroom environment. Now, if a student needs a little more support than what can be happened in the classroom environment, we then have what's called a spot, which is where the social worker and the psychologist, we have a calming down area where students can come. Some students will go to that room, sit there for five minutes to self-regulate, gather themselves, and go right back to class, where others may need an opportunity to actually talk to our social worker or our psychologist. The nice thing about PBI's boards is we're all aware, every Monday and Friday, they're able to go in there and document their feelings for how they're feeling. And staff has access to that, they see that, our social workers have that. So when a student comes in and we see that they've self-identified themselves as upset, we can kind of, you know, give them a break, you know, we all have bad days. You know, maybe not call on that student that day, or maybe pull that student to the side and say, hey, how can I help you? Is there anything that I can do? And some students will open up, some students are not ready for that to open up yet, but it allows that extra support for our students, because we all have, you know, we all have bad days. We all have things going on in our life, some that are not good and, and others that have some great days. We also have students that identify as at risk. And so at Giles School, we take the my savers, which is the student portion. The students will go in and complete a portion, and then that data, the social worker analyzes right away. And so if a student is identified as at risk, that social worker is pulling that student. If not that day, the very next day, to make sure where they're at, developing a plan for that student, and giving them the necessary supports. And then we have for our teachers, which is just called savers, would allow our advisory teachers to go in and assess their advisory students. And then what we able to, what we're able to do is take that data, compare it, and then provide that additional support. If the social worker needs to have groups, an academic group, a social group, an emotional group, to provide that additional support for them. We also use the second step program, common sense digital citizenship curriculum. That curriculum is through Lee School all the way up through Giles School. What we're striving to do is to get the kids, the students to understand what it means to have, have the qualities of pride and to be Giles maid, not only here at school, but at home in the community, to always have those qualities. We use our PBI's rewards to promote positive behavior using PBI's points. Unlike Lee School, where they're paper, we're digital, where we want to support those students. We actually have a committee that meets on Wednesdays once a month, and they develop a matrix, building matrix, that is now pushed out to all of our staff, that we follow and, and support our students. We even take that step further. We have a building matrix, but then the student, or excuse me, the teachers then create a classroom matrix to support them within their classroom environment for our students. So we want to teach, and we teach pride, the building matrix each trimester. We also, with the administration, the assistant principal, and our social work psychologist, we look to identify hot spot areas or trigger areas. So for example, if we're recognizing in fifth grade social media, we're having an issue with an increase in inappropriate usage on social media. So then what we'll do is we'll create, we'll work with our advisory teachers. The first phase is the advisory teachers going in advisory and giving a lesson to all of our fifth graders, so that they have that lesson. If we see that we need to provide that additional support, then we send either administration and or social work in to provide that additional support as well. We always want to set our students up for success, so we work closely with the North Police Department. And the North Police Department comes in as well, and they provide training. In fact, a couple, but a week before the end of school, we wanted to make sure that the North Police Department had a quiet summer. So we went over every, every detail with our students to make sure that they were respectful this summer and being Giles maid. We also, during our morning blips, we have what's called a behavioral blips, which we collaborate, we look at the data, we identify, okay, we see, you know, a certain area where physical, physical aggression, for example, maybe an area of focus that we need to look at as a grade level team. So we identify, what we need to identify what's going on, we, we develop a plan, and then we go and put the plan into place and see how it works with our goal of reducing referrals. And as I shared with you at the beginning, we did hit our goal, which means we had less majors and less minors by ten percent for this school year. So we're very pleased with that, and we'll continue that going forward. We are also, we want to inform our families, and PBI's rewards is a program that's really three hundred and sixty degrees of communication. So when a referral goes in, a minor goes in, it's real time, parent hits it. If it's a major, that has been processed with the assistant principal's office. But once that has been processed, then that parent gets that notification. And then is followed up with a phone call, either by the classroom teacher or by our assistant principal. And we also want to thank the North Education for providing us next school year, the school resource officer that will be in the building, providing relationships with our students, working with our students, supporting our families, and also supporting our school staff. So we're really excited for that, so thank you so much. I know that that school resource officer will be shared with Lee as well. I know the traffic concerns over at Lee in the mornings. So we're excited for that. And then, this is a working document, so we're always reflecting, evaluating, and refining the, this document. We worked very hard throughout the years, I shared, we had fourteen meetings. But beyond those meetings, there's hours outside of those meetings, where the building leadership team are, is working to, to hone in and, and solve our problems that we have and, and move forward. So I'd like to thank the building leadership team for their dedication and hard work. I know it's difficult for them, because they go back to that, right to the grade level team, and they have to report out. And, you know, everyone always has an opinion, and we want to make sure we get everyone on the same page, and that we work together to solve the problems as a, as a faculty and staff, so I appreciate that. And we end with, we are Giles maid, and that's a nice image of all of the staff in North School District dating and our choose happiness teacher institute in the beginning of the year. So that concludes our presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
School improvement plan for the school. It's the perfect time if anyone needs to stand up and a little stretch. So we're really excited to share our school improvement plan. This is one of the, well, I'd say one of the most important things that we put together, because this is our long-term planning and how we plan.
because this is our long-term planning and how we plan for the following school year. So this is our building leadership team, I'm going to let them introduce themselves in case you're not sure who everyone is.
I'm Josie Tumini, I'm here in Frenchas here.
Patrick Wood, the lead teacher.
Good evening, Wendy, hi, here at the.
Bella and Polly, first grade teacher here at Lee.
Nicolee, second grade teacher here at Lee.
Trish Schultz, third grade teacher here at Lee.
Felix, fourth grade teacher here.
Alright, so everything that we do has to tie to our mission and vision, which I know one of you gets to read it at every board meeting, so you know. Inspire educational excellence in your community by commitment. The vision is also a little bit longer, but that's posted there, but I won't read that to you. But you have it there, but know that everything that we do ties to those two pieces that we try to achieve.
Okay, so who are our lead tigers? Well, besides being safe, respectful, and responsible, which they all are, and we all love, they are a very diverse group. As you can see by the numbers, most of our student population is 68.8% white and is breaking down in other areas with Hispanic, Asian, and two or more other cultures. Lee School is comprised of about 638 students, from grade preschool to fourth grade. And the other numbers indicate different statuses as well. 48% of our students are low in income, low classified, low income, pre-reduced lunch. 35% of our students are multi-language learners, and 16% of our students are working with IEPs.
So one thing to share out that we're really proud of this year is looking at our end of the year data. So we had three goals. We had mathful of 70% of students meeting their expected gains in our individualized growth targets. We had an ELA, and we were hoping that 70% of our students would meet their typical goals there. And then we were looking to increase our social emotional behavioral goal. It's focused on what we call a tier fidelity inventory. And we were trying to move from 48 to 58% of. Now, in actuality, we increased, we actually exceeded our goal by a little bit in each of those areas. So we met our mathful with 72% of students meeting their typical goals. We also had 72% of our students meet their typical goals in reading. And our tier fidelity inventory, our goal was 58%, but we got up to 68% for this school year. So all three goals were met, and we're really proud of all of our students and staff for making that happen. Really, they're everyone doing their part to get us there.
Yeah, I would also like to congratulate our whole Lee staff. It's really wonderful to meet all three of your goals. And I know that I've come through a lot of hard work for each one of you, and target support for your students, and you also are looking at tier two in the classroom, so thank you for your work on that. Wonderful to meet all three of your school improvement goals.
And you won't necessarily see this up here, but I just want to point out one piece of data that I think is really interesting. A couple months back, I shared some information, but I was asked to present at an IREDA conference. Because we were seeing a large number of our students meeting their stretch growth. So this is typical growth, but stretch growth is a more ambitious measure. And the typical, or you know, national norm is about 20% of students meet their stretch growth. We had 44% of our students meet stretch growth in reading and 40% in math. So we're double what the national norm is in terms of meeting that ambitious measure. Which I'm also really proud of, and about that's something that is amazing news to share with you.
Turns out everybody else is being recognized for that next month on a trip to Boston from IREDA. Are you speaking there also?
I had the opportunity to speak there, and I said, I'm just going to observe this at this point. But yes, I will be in Boston in a couple nights. Just some more to learn. And now we'll move into some strengths.
Okay, so Lee School has many strengths. One strength that I would like everybody to take note of is our pride program. This is our school-wide PBIS program. Our students are our main cause daily to, their earning cause when they are showing respectful, responsible, and safe behavior. We go and visit PlaMart on a rotating basis, and we take our cause and we do some shopping. Kids buy a variety of toys, intrigues that they get really excited about, and it's super motivating in our building. A second strength I'd like to note is our supportive environment. As noted by the Five Essential Survey, we scored high in the areas of peer support, student-teacher trust, and academic personality. Another strength is our attendance rate. We have a five-year attendance rate of 94.88%, which is higher than the state average.
I'm going to follow up some with some more strengths. First one will be the multi-level education that we provide here, including the arts, which is music and art, PE and STEAM. All of those specials are provided to our students once a week with PE being twice a week. We also have partnership with Orange Park for after-school classes, allowing our students to be part of programs like athletics and art, and just getting them that sense of community. We also have our summer programming that we offer at school, that's actually going on right now as well. We also talk about summer style, worrying about kids not continuing that education, and we extend that to certain students who also qualify for some funding for that during the summer, beginning of that time. Some more strengths that we would like to review are the facility upgrades that we've seen over the past few years. We're seeing lighting, things are looking even a lot newer with the painting, preschool playground, preschool classrooms, good amount of classroom furniture. Ministry of Offices are looking much nicer as well. Lots of new and refreshing things in our building to make that flexible learning possible. We also have the extension of our preschool program through preschool for all. We now have 100 students that we are servicing through that program, which helps us to allow those needs at a much earlier age. And then we have our MTSS program where we monitor the student progress. We've created this system and really worked hard on it over the last two years. We're able to track student's progress from here to here using the Branching Minds program. And this also allows a collaborative process with all of the teachers, related services, administration, where we meet together to make sure that the interventions and support we're providing are really meeting the kids' needs. Even though we have lots of strengths, there's always room for growth, so.
Kevin, just speaking on collaborative practices, that's one of our challenges. We have been doing a lot of collaboration amongst our own teams performing collaboration in all these meetings. But one way we want to work on that a little bit more is that vertical line and collaborating amongst different team grade levels. We're starting that, but some period through observations, but that's another one to refer there. Our math score group versus the ELA score group. We're seeing, I mean, looking at our data, they're both very similar, but just diving a little bit deeper, we're seeing that our ELA score group is a little bit higher than our math score group. So we want to dig a little bit deeper into that as well. Our multilingual learning support, with the number of students that we're getting that are non-MO learners, we want to get that support a little bit, and we're going to do that in a couple slides when we talk about our action steps. And then also, our ACL supports for students in tier three. We have a lot of support to put into place, but that's still something that's a challenge and something we want to work on a little bit more. And then also that vertical line for ELA learning, which is going to get in with those collaborative practices, talk to the different grade levels, see what's happening in third grade, so we can make sure we do something similar in fourth grade, continuing that. Also, some varying instructional practices where teachers around the school, several of them are teaching different ways and seeing which are, which work well, which don't work as well. And then also increasing intuitive discourse, increasing student discussion. Alright, so we're going to be getting into some problem statements. So just point out that the problem statement is just identify the why for us.
Alright, I'll have to look a little closer here, sorry, if you can't see. So problem statement one, over a three-year period, you averaged 56% of our students making expected gains in math. But as we just have learned, in our most recent IREDA math data, 72% of our students made expected gains. Problem statement number two, over a three-year period, we have averaged 58% of our students making expected gains in reading during the current school year. 72% of the students are making those expected growth targets according to the IREDA reading data. And then number three, we have been assessing our school systems for SEV support based on PBIS tier fidelity inventory. In the spring of 2025, we scored 68% on the TFI. There was a score of zero for the tier three portion of the TFI. And we'll talk more about that here in a minute.
Alright, so those problem statements identify the why for us. Now our goal, we're coming to our next, to find what it is that we want to see and what we're going to do.
So for math, 75% of students who met their stretch growth this past school year will meet their stretch growth a second time as measured by the IREDA math diagnostic assessment from fall of 25 to spring of 26. So we really see that projection proficiency happen when kids meet their stretch growth twice in a row. So that's really what we're striving for with this math pool, which will increase overall achievement and overall scores for math.
The ELA goal looks much the same. 75% of the students who met their stretch growth this past school year met their stretch growth a second time by a measure by the IREDA reading diagnostic assessment from fall 2025 to spring of 26.
And then now for our SEV goal, based on the PBS tier fidelity inventory, we are currently at sustained level for tier one and tier two. However, at least a score of zero on 26 for tier three. So now this school year for 25, 26, that tier three portion will increase the score of 10 out of 26. And we throw a lot of that tier fidelity inventory tier five. And it just measures how low or important PBS at our school through all three tiers. We're really going to try to hone in on that tier three level throughout the school to make sure students are receiving that individualized support that they need on that level.
Alright, so the problem statements identify the why, the goals define the what. Now our action plans are going to deliver the powerpoint to meet those goals.
So we're refining our PBIS system, and identifying tier three gaps using the TFI. We refer, we refer to that a lot, it's super helpful. We're going to prioritize implementation of simple, high-impact strategies, so just direct, not overthinking things. We'll provide PPI to the staff on tier three supports, including progress monitoring, individualized plans with tracking within Branching Minds, background supports, and SEV courses, so really growing what we're already doing. And develop a new fidelity checklist for tier three supports and determine fade-out criteria for individualized interventions, because that's our ultimate goal, is to fade the kids out of the tier three supports.
And a few more action steps we have is to strengthen two hundred teams by reviewing expectations, acknowledgements, behavior definitions, and conduct informal observations. Reinforce tier-two practices and include that fidelity on our check-in, check-out, and social skill groups. And review that entry and exit criteria and interator reliability on staff as we're reading all of our surveys. And then add stakeholder roles to tier teams, including ours. potential staff members who we love could also be a parent. But let's go on and train on kind of database decision-making to make sure we're kind of touching on all areas needed to improve from this level.
So we have different action plans to help us achieve those goals. The first one is work with our PLC system, with our teamwork, work in professional learning communities to collaborate, to make sure our students are learning what they, we want them to know. And our goal is to move towards a four-point scale so that not only can we help our students achieve mastery of skills, but once they do achieve mastery of those priority standards, what we can do to help them go beyond that, to exceed those expectations.
We're going to conduct K to ELA curriculum review. There's big changes coming to Super Kids. We want to really dive into those and make sure that that curriculum still fits our needs in all ELA areas. Of course, that encompasses a lot of things, and it's an expensive program, so we want to make sure that it's money well-spent. We'll also be open to reviewing other curriculum options if we feel that Super Kids will no longer meet our needs with the changes, but we will hold that in mind.
So we always want to keep learning as educators. So every sporting as far as professional development, the BLC sends out a survey to our staff, all staff members, and we survey their wants and needs for what they're looking for as far as professional development. We take that data and then we plan accordingly for the next school year. So we're going to keep doing that, and hopefully we'll keep meeting the needs of our teachers. And that way, that will impact our kids as well.
And we also are going to take some steps towards flexible cursing, making sure that the interventions we are providing are supporting our students, focusing on fluency and really targeting those foundational gaps with the earlier grades. And as a staff, we are going to collaborate to make sure that we're doing things like monitoring our student progress with fidelity to make sure that the interventions we are providing them are really targeting the needs that we have from the data that they're showing for their progress.
Cold setting is another important step for us. Each classroom teacher sets a purpose for our IREDA diagnostics. We want the kids to take accountability for their performance on this assessment. And we do it a variety of ways. We have checklists. We have a kid-friendly, power-tory presentation that just teaches them, you know, some of the questions are normally right up the hill, down the hill, on the platform. But they really understand, you know, the test could be very challenging, or at least some easy questions. And again, it sets that purpose to explain to them, you know, how truly important this test is and, you know, set the goal so they can be very kind.
And finally, for multilingual learners, with the increase of multilingual learners in our school, we did change our multilingual programming this school year. And we have seen a big number of students exit out this year continuing their supports, but also fine-tuning, especially by adding a new, very professional Polish, and then getting that new Spanish teacher, seeing how those teachers and how we can fine-tune that collaboration amongst those teachers. So continuing that to make more additions with our multilingual learners. Alright, so to close this out, you know, the best way to predict the future is to create it. So we want to create the future that we want to see for our students following our mission and vision and through collaboration and teamwork. Thank you. If you have any questions, please.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to.
Ministering reports, superintendent.
Everything that I discussed.
Special education, Mr. Masters?
Yeah, so only one thing, with our excited school year program is underway. It runs concurrently with our summer school program. ESY, just as a reminder, is for specific students with individualized education programs who may need to kind of have a little bit of support to help with regression recruitment challenges throughout the school year. So far, they're doing great activities such as Father's Day crafts, they're doing some things with roller coaster projects, so very exciting stuff. That concludes my report.
General reports, child school, Mr. Vicky?
Thank you. So I'm currently working on staffing for the next school year. We had some staffing changes, so I'm doing interviews for new, for positions for next school year. Also, would like to remind everyone that if you're still interested in purchasing school supply kits through the PTA, you have until July 1st, that ends and closes. So please take advantage of that wonderful opportunity if you so choose. And then finally, if your child is going to be participating in athletics, they think they may be participating this summer, please take them to get a physical so that when September comes around, boys softball, girls softball, and cross-country take place right away. It's important that they have a current physical on file, and that concludes my report.
Lee School, Dr. Rubio?
So I just wanted to add that on August 21st, we'll have our back-to-school supply drop-off and some curriculums. and some curriculum presentations as well. So there will be two presentations that each teacher will be presenting, so two separate times, you know, back-to-back. Also, we are looking at the times that we had previously shared out because it was brought to my attention that there is a P T A event that evening for the Chicago Dogs game. So we may try to move the event a few minutes earlier just so that way more people would be able to come to that first session if they're also planning to attend that event. But I've been working with Mr. Guzik on those details, but we will definitely communicate that out shortly. I think the way that it was, we had one session starting at 5:30. I think the game doesn't start till like 6:30 to 7 o'clock. So there's still that opportunity where it could be made, but if we could give a little bit more room on the, you know, front end of that, I think we appreciate it. So we're looking at that. So just wanted to make you aware, but we do have that event planned on 21st.
Maggie, please. Board committees. Oh, yeah. Oops, anyway. Just for the board's jobs.
I am pleased and excited to announce that I have no report.
This is a due lead. Please, please. I'm gonna confirm that as well. So I have clear report, we don't have a report. Now, for board committees. You'll see each of us have sheets prepared as per the music. It reviews the committees and who has asked to be on which committee. And I'd ask her to put some iteration there, just give you the fourth column about when we should be meeting or when is it suggested to meet, to meet, sorry. Policy and development, so we don't have to determine the date.
Do you wanna look at your calendar and then I can send those to I mean, really, we should meet monthly for that. It could be a very quick monthly meeting, but then we would be able to come into the next board meeting prepared of policy discussions.
Great. Building grounds, I think for now, we might give them a couple of things that are gonna be happening in the summer. We need to look at that. That'd be a good time.
Yeah, typically, we'd need an eight in October, but I did put an April on there also. It would be massively met twice a year. Maybe in April, October, there's a six-month difference there. I don't think we need to have the date tonight, but if we, that certainly is fine.
Negotiations of human resources, as known, we're in the middle of negotiations and there's a meeting or two. Communications, Annie and Jim, about to discuss.
Maybe the week prior to a board meeting. We'll set, we'll provide meetings.
Sure. North Park is pretty, personally, Guzik usually brings up good times to do it, but it's not yet, twice a year.
And then as we're negotiating, we probably need to meet with them soon because that addendum ends. So we'll have to discuss if we want to continue or what we want to continue. Me, they've reached out to me, they do have, he is fairly certain that he will have space for supper. He just might eat our nuts, which is fine, we can get them over there. So I'm not sure if that will then have another agreement, why not? I know right now he wants to get past the island in the city.
Yeah.
So maybe right after that.
And also, yeah, give him a grace period after then, kind of evaluating how the whole, if they could use our field for
I believe they are.
Yeah, just kind of evaluating the whole situation and see if it's something that he's interested to do.
So I will just reach out to you when, when, when Yager's ready. Our current contract is still in place, it would just be any addendum that we're adding. I would expect if it's not late July and early August, somewhere in there.
And on that, we see education, we have a, this is a committee of the whole. And just looking at what it describes, focus on curricular, co-curricular, extracurricular programs. These are things we talk about at the board meeting. So it's kind of embedded in a regular board meeting. If, to discretion, Mr. Guzik, he would like us to meet as a separate meeting, just let us know.
I think I might change that to where, when we talk about the typical schedule, I'll change that to monthly board meetings? Is that alright with you? Because like something that they did tonight, the school recruitment plan would qualify as an educational committee of the whole tonight. That is something that if the board wanted, you could do it a separate day, separate time. Just know you have that option. I'm okay doing it at this meeting, but it's really up to the voice discretion.
I think within a regular board meeting, it helps ensure all board members are present and usually fits right in.
I'll change that.
Behavioral interventions. So right before the meeting started, I had a word with Super Gen Music and she explained how this fits, this topic in general fits right in with policy. Because as you see in this description, focuses, focuses, I'm sorry, focused on assisting in the development of student behavior policy and procedures that provides information and recommendations to the board. Well, that to me sounds like it plays right in the policy. So because we have a committee as a committee, it was called particularly called behavioral intervention. And because that description fits right in the policy of the document, I think we could remove that committee and just let it focus on a committee called policy of the document, which covered any concern. Would everybody be okay with that? Finance, this one is a little more, we talked about this throughout the year anyway. We know that we have August, September, in that timeframe, we have meetings in the close two months, then November, December. August, September for budget, and November, December for tax revenue. So as long as we fit that right into a regular board meeting, we're fine. It's gone well in the last couple of years.
Yeah, last year, I think we kept it at the regular seven o'clock time. The year before, I think we did six thirty. So we'll just leave it at seven o'clock and do it with any of the finance.
We could change it to seven o'clock. I do hold out for this, it's a good reference.
Would the board members like us to provide a folder or a notebook or something for you to put your papers in? Or do all them assist on your own?
I just
There's ever anything you'd like us to provide from Andre and I think that it gets a little
But touching on those for this month as seen in the agenda. Like I said, negotiations, we're currently in the middle of negotiations. We do not have any finance committee coming up. Building grounds, will you be discussing any of your discussion items today?
A little bit, yes. I do have a picture that's only on my phone at this moment, but I can show board members that the stage is down now at Giles, which is pretty exciting.
Okay, we talked about negotiations and progress. Okay, we'll move on. Let's go to discussion items.
Yeah, thank you. So I have a very quick discussion items tonight. This evening, I am actually asking the board to take action on the food agreement with organic life. Just a quick reminder, this is something that the Illinois State Board of Education has to approve. It's actually a very large process going through a lunch because we are members of the National School Lunch Program. So any students who do qualify for free lunch, we give reimbursement for that. So very strict guidelines. So they have approved our agreement. And again, we are on the agreement with Rosemont, with Penoiar, and Union Ridge for another year, next year. So the cost of the lunch for families will be $4.48 per day, which is a 2.9% increase, 13 cents per day. So that is in our consent agenda tonight to approve this plan moving forward for our families. So all the feedback we've received from teachers, from staff, from the students, from families have been that they love the food. It's a really great addition. I would expect that next year, we'll be going out to bed, I don't know, we'll be going out to bed next year. And if we remain on a contract with Union Ridge and Rosemont and Penoiar or not, I don't know at this point. As you know, there are some changes happening at Union Ridge where they will be able to provide, not next year, but the year after, food being cooked within their building. So we probably are gonna have to look at our contract. But this is only one year, you will, we'll probably go to bed the year after. Which at that point, we could also look at, I know one of the interests of the board has been good nutritious food for the students, which I think we have met, but also to allow that à la carte, you know, if students wanted to go buy a bag of chips, if students wanted to buy a piece of fruit at lunch. We're looking into that option as well. Part of the National School Lunch Program, that some of that gets a little tricky. So we'll look into that during the school year next year. So today I have on my discussion a couple of slides about vape detectors. A board member that asked me to do some research into vape detectors, so I'm providing that for you all tonight. So a purpose of a vape detector is to help our voice booster staff to be alerted right away if someone is vaping. This would be centralized to the bathrooms. And then this would allow an adult to respond very quickly when the sensor does go off. And there are different ways we can look at the alert. Most of the companies that have the alert and all of the data that we have really found from other schools is they have a silent alarm that goes off, so there's an alarm for the students here. But it gives alerted up into, actually on the phone of whatever staff member have the app. And then they are alerted and can then connect to the cameras to see, oh, it was in this bathroom. At this time, they can then go to the camera system and see who was around in the bathroom at that time. No company that we've reached out to was really able to provide us with statistics on vape sensors reducing vaping in bathrooms. There just isn't the data on that. However, we did do a couple of discussions with Ridgewood, I'll kind of skip ahead here. Ridgewood does have vape detectors in their bathrooms, they are silent alarms. A text message when the sensor is triggered and then they go to cameras, as I just mentioned. At the beginning of the school year, they caught a couple dozen students vaping in the bathrooms. There was a significant decrease in the level of alarms that were not as the usual. Mr. Droge was able to reach out to four different companies that provide vape centers for schools. And on this slide, here's his data, going from highest cost for the ten bathrooms at Giles down to the lowest cost. And it does happen that that company, Solter, is the company that Ridgewood currently uses. So that does come recommended to us, which is nice, and it happens to be the one at the lowest cost. Most of these companies, in fact, all four of them, do give you the first year licensing for free. After that, it varies, for Solter, it is $500 a year after that for licensing, so minimal amount. There is a, I mean, $7,070 cost if we do decide to move forward. So I'm not asking the board to take action on that tonight. I would welcome discussion from the board on if they feel that this is something you would like me to continue working towards at Giles, or if you'd like me to go as a whole, or what information I can provide for you on vape detectors at Giles.
I'm curious to what the admin thinks of that.
I think it would be a good option. I think it could, we can crack down and identify those students right away. As Mrs. Guzik said, when the alarm goes off, it would alert our cell phones, myself and this is the principal and the S R O. And then we would be able to right away go to camera and identify who's in that bathroom and handle that situation in a quicker manner. And then based on the data, we would be able to do like hotspot training. If we see it's an increase in a certain grade level, we can go to that grade level, educate them, give them the educational knowledge that they need to know how unsafe vaping is.
If I can get a base vape detector, certainly I have to turn to vaping in this school.
But everything has its costs, you know, so we just need to decide, is the threat of vaping high enough to us that that's worth that cost of the ten detectors?
You may have touched on it. Total cost, let's say picking a, the last, $7,070. That is the startup cost, first year of licensing.
Correct.
And what's the term?
One year, and then after that, it's $500 for the license per year for all ten, minimum. Yes, no, just to increase the price at the beginning. I would think that this would then cause students to think twice about vaping.
Yeah, that would get support.
The only thing that you might have, and every company says this, is you could have some plus-puzzlers. You could have some types of sprays that mimic and could cause it to go off. That would have to go down to Mr. Beiki's investigation on it.
How does it detect it? What is it picking up?
Yeah, it is picking up the vape.
What is the word?
This? Yes, a miss, yes. That's why now Soltar says that that is a very low incidence within their vapes. Ridgewood is saw a low incident in that as well. Going off of that, Duro, who is also in support of the vapes, obviously, in the bathroom.
And was there like additional maintenance on checking them every year as part of the fee where
Right, the licensing.
That's part of licensing.
Are they also able to pick up if the kids are too frequent with these things?
Yes, there is an alarm that goes off. How the system is built is there is a a piece that goes onto the wall or the ceiling, however you're putting it, and then the actual vape clicks into that. So if the vape is removed from that or tampered with, then the alarm does go off. The detector, the vape detector.
I mean, the bathrooms in Giles are not large, so it probably picks up, so it's not
No, ten of them.
But I'm saying in regards to size of the bathrooms, they're moving that, anyway, so it should.
We would only need one bathroom.
Correct. And that's all bathrooms. Ten, we'll need staff bathrooms with the student bathrooms, ten student bathrooms, male and female. There are not single bathrooms at Giles.
Including the one outside of the gym?
Correct. That could go off during sports events, so that's something we'd have to think about and do some norming on how we're gonna handle that. Funny, Ridgewood said that the only time it really goes off for them now is on Saturday bingo days.
Well, honestly, yeah, sporting events.
They don't act on Saturday.
No, I know. But my opinion is if it does happen on the sporting event, then you still check your cameras. And if an adult comes out and you recognize that person, you, I mean, there shouldn't be, if you're an adult or not, which is annoying. So and if it's some other parent from a different school, you send out a letter
some other parent from a different school, you send out a letter to that school saying that, whatever, I mean, I think...
Yeah, we just need to put together some norming on that, but Mr. Beiki or Mrs. Gulo is at every sporting event, so...
Well, there are signs posted saying...
We would, also, post signs. Yeah, there's not any, most of your detection then is the students know it's there and they don't do it.
Right.
Why take that chance on doing it if you know it's there?
Right. I, I'm not on board, it's not...
So I can bring this forward to the board in July for approval?
Yes.
All right. I mean, the only thing is like that false alarm thing and then questioning kid, the investigation part might be a little bit tricky, but we'll see how many false alarms we do get.
You said the word camera, you mentioned cameras, in force, we'll be just right in time. Cameras, so is there any shortage of cameras?
Yes, yeah, Mr. Beiki and Mr. Drobe just started working on a list, I don't know if they're specifically outside of the bathrooms, I'm sorry, I started answering that too quickly, and he may be able to answer that.
Yeah, shortage, was that the question? Yeah, we do have a shortage of camera, I don't want to say on public camera because it's being monitored, but yes, we do have some that we need to look at.
Specifically outside of the bathroom.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so they have a list, I was able to secure about a little bit less than $6,000 on a grant, so I just gave them $6,000 to create a list, so they're working on that right now. That's not a lot, you know, I'm sure that we could look at additional funds for cameras, or additional funding for cameras.
But based on, I mean, real...
They're working on that list now, in a priority, prioritizing that list.
This, is it legal to have cameras in classrooms?
Sorry, I'm going to have to look that up, I don't know the answer to that. Certainly wouldn't be something that anyone, I think when I, that would have to be discussed with the teacher side.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the legality, let me look that up and get back to you about that, because I don't think it's not legal, but I need to check that out.
Really helped a lot of the investigation we had on that area, you know?
Probably not bad. So quick update, I know Mr. Beiki's plan talked about the SRO, we did conduct SRO interviews today and last week, the agreement is being reviewed by our legal team, and then in July, I'm going to bring the final agreement through. And the name and information. So 500 policies tonight in consent agenda, we are moving on a second round of these very simple five colon two zero updates, just the name, president and secretary, five colon three zero, the designated after the board president in three spots, and then just some cleanup language on those three. Facilities plan, so we're really excited about this, and I did write this in a board update, but WALD is going to be reviewing all of our district systems and facilities and putting together a blueprint for the future of Orangeville District aging. So today I have on the agenda approval of a contract with WALD, which is our new architect and engineering firm. This really allows us to plan for the future, and it plans, in that plan will allow for, will allocate where district resources are, what we want to prioritize as a district. And now, what's nice about this too is that will continue, so after a year falls off, if we have a 10-year plan, within that same system, we'll add another year, and that's why we may be looking at in April, building some grounds, to make sure that we keep growing and we keep, as we cross things off, we cross many things off on our list, especially our 10-year life safety list, we want to make sure that we keep looking forward on what we can do to provide more and more facility updates on our aging and old buildings. So very excited about this, we, I expect this to come to the board probably in September, and I would like to ask WALD to come and present this. And that's it.
Consent agenda, I need a motion to approve 16A through 16H, dial a motion. Maria? Megan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Some, board comments, comments, discussion. We'll move on to closed session. Consider motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more of the classes of employees, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, student disciplinary cases, and review of closed session minutes. Ken, I have a motion. So Annie, Lorenzo, you have a rule call.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Triguil?
Yes, motion passes, we will go to closed session at, it's 8:40 now, it's 5:10. Our back and open session at 10:57. We're going to move on to personnel action items, I need a motion to approve 20A through 20C, have a motion?
Motion.
Amanda? Who else? Maria, we have a rule call, please.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Triguil?
Yes, motion passes. We will adjourn at 10...
19A.
I'm sorry?
19A.
Oh, jeez. 20 minutes, turn. Action item 19A, consider motion to approve agreement with SDR Partners LLC and final payment $38,857. Can I have a motion? Maria, Jim, rule call, please.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Triguil?
Yes, the motion passes. How are we able to pack $10.50? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Means no.